affordability with ADUs typically they rent for about 20 to 25% less than market rate units in our own community there's a growing need for housing college excuse me for housing for college students multi-generational housing housing for people on fixed incomes and also people who would like to downsize from their single family homes to smaller spaces with our current housing crisis and updated adu ordinance opens up some single-family zones to provide more housing so what is an adu generally speaking it's also referred to as a second dwelling unit with its own kitchen and bathroom I'm going to before I move forward play a quick video from the second unit center and just to point out in the beginning you'll hear both adu and second dwelling unit SDU and these are interchangeable terms so if you hear one or the other they mean the same thing so before I move on I am going to play this quick videos just a few minutes
it is now easier than ever to build second units commonly called ADUs in San Mateo County local homeowners are finding second units to be ideal solutions to supplementing their income keeping family members close or as a means to remain here after retirement San Mateo County and many cities are now making it easier to add a home
in Portola Valley we have a lot of big lots because we have big lots I think that makes us ideal for ADUs because you can nestle them into the lots and you don't even know they're there now because everybody everybody feels the housing pinch people are reconsidering it
ADUs typically range from 220 square foot studios to over 1,000 square foot detached houses with multiple bedrooms a bathroom and a kitchen second units can be freestanding detached structures an attachment to your home a converted interior space a garage apartment or a unit above a garage
when we moved in there were two houses already on the lot and a garage which was not in good shape we did not change the footprint of either house but we added the new three-car garage with a master suite and office above it it's been really wonderful because I love being 40 feet out the back door of my grandsons and son and daughter-in-law at the same time I feel like I live in a park
building second units can help to address our housing challenges in San Mateo County by offering an affordable housing solution for schoolteachers firefighters and other community members who otherwise may have to commute long distances as a homeowner second units can offer you rental income housing for relatives downsizing opportunities flexible space and or a sound investment
I had this nice in-law unit that was empty my son and his girlfriend had been renting a little studio apartment so this was a real step up for them today and for the future maybe I'll stay here and I'll stay in the in-law unit and have grandchildren running around the rest of the house or at some point if and when I decide to sell this is what people are going to look for
for more information on building second units visit our website at secondunitcentersmcc.org to access valuable resources such as a calculator for budgeting idea book and workbook and follow us on Twitter at HomeForAllSMC consider building a second unit and be a part of the solution by creating a home for all in San Mateo County
I wanted to show that video just as sort of an overview of what we're looking at in terms of second dwelling units try to get this mouse going again so as the video mentioned there's several types of ADUs detached which is the freestanding structure so really thinking about sort of a detached guest house in your backyard usually there are also attached units which you can think of as like an addition to your main home the unit itself would have a separate entrance but the footprint would be attached with the house itself we've also been seeing a lot of garage conversions or interior conversions so converting part of your existing space to the living unit and we're seeing this more in the in the older neighborhoods and the flats where you see the detached garages at the rear of the lot we've seen quite a few of those being converted there's also the option for a garage apartment which as I mentioned is either converting the entire garage or just part of it to the adu and then finally units above detached garages and we'll be talking about that a little bit later and that will be a second story unit above the singles or the the first story garage and then one other type of unit that's relatively new is called the junior accessory dwelling unit JDU there's smaller units that are with the house itself and they can share some facilities with the house namely the bathroom so they're a little bit different than ADUs in that they're less expensive to build and less challenging because you really just need the sleeping area and some sort of cooking facility and can share everything else with the house they're limited in size and they also you don't have to provide parking with them so that's a current optional type of unit that the state provides for
I'm sorry on that is that you said it doesn't need additional bathrooms just it's basically a kitchen
right and you could share bathrooms with the main house
okay
yeah so this is a timeline of the history and what we're anticipating for the future we've had several ADU ordinance updates the last was in 2011 with a comprehensive zoning ordinance update since then several state laws have passed in 2017 18 and 19 and currently we're actually under state law for regulation of ADUs tonight we have our study session where we would like to receive both PC direction and public input and then hopefully returning to the planning commission in November December with a first look at the ordinance a draft ordinance and then if recommended to council anticipating going there in early January or February with a second reading in February or March so there are a number of principles and goals for the update a few of which include making it easier to receive approval for an ADU striving to maintain neighborhood character and really we want to build in as much as we can into the new ordinance ways to preserve privacy light and air especially in light of the single-family changes that we went through last year so really finding a way to you know have our ordinance address that too as much as we can so in terms of the study session this evening we'll be doing a presentation and then taking questions and comments from the planning commission that we would then like to get comments from the public and then planning commission discussion on the different items and then we can go over next steps depending on on the outcome of that so brief background on current regulations within the municipal code there's three different sections that really govern accessory dwelling units the first primary one is the city single-family zoning standards the second is state law so the current laws right now and then for detached structures there's certain provisions within our accessory structures ordinance that also come into play with detached accessory dwelling units so as I mentioned before we're currently under state law in terms of reviewing ADUs however we wanted to include this what's in our code now to show both the historical standards that we had prior to the state laws changing and also give an idea of what we can look at in terms of deciding whether an ADU you know complies with the different requirements I'm going to go over the state laws in just a moment so a lot of these standards have changed or we can't control anymore and I will go over those but I did want to show sort of what's in our code now and things we looked at before and again I'll go through these as they've changed so with the last state update there's certain things that are in place now the current state mandates say that ADUs cannot be prohibited the maximum size for an attached or detached ADU is 1200 square feet there's a maximum requirement of one parking space per unit and no parking is required in certain instances garages can be converted to ADUs the setbacks for an ADU on top of a garage is five feet maximum there is no prohibition on short-term rentals it's up to the local jurisdiction and replacement parking can be in any configuration on the lot so those are in effect today now there are quite a few new laws that we just found out about within the last week and a half that are planning they have not all been signed by the governor but they have been enrolled by the senate and house and these laws are AB 68 AB 81 and SB 13 there's quite substantial changes with these so the first is that there's only going to be a maximum of four-foot setbacks for ADUs right now it's five feet they'll allow if a garage carport or covered parking is demolished in conjunction with an ADU no replacement parking is required that's a change from now there's may allow for a minimum of 850 square feet for a one-bedroom or 1,000 square feet for a two-bedroom ADU and may allow for both an ADU and a JDU per lot with a 800 square foot ADU and a max height of 16 feet now there's quite a few regulations so I have a few slides just highlighting kind of the the most impactful sections but there are there are quite a few standards the next group of regulations multifamily structures structures can now have ADUs in unused areas city must act on the ADU application within 60 days a pretty big change is in cases where the proposed ADU would result in exceeding the lot coverage floor area ratios open space requirements the city has to allow at least at 800 square foot 16-foot tall ADU with four foot side and rear setbacks ADUs are permitted even in non-conforming zoning conditions and there are no short-term vacation rentals so those are like your Airbnb type rentals in terms of JDUs cities can require owner occupancy without the parking existing accessory structures can be demolished completely and rebuilt in the same location to the same dimensions for ADUs cities cannot require owner occupancy at least through January of 2025 and then once the ordinance is adopted the city does have to submit it to the state they will provide comments on it and the city would have to revise it if the state says that the new ordinance does not comply with all the new state laws so San Carlos has several housing element policies that support the creation of second units or ADUs the first is to promote the development of second units to increase housing opportunities the next is to assist in the development of new housing that's affordable at all income levels and then another is to remove and or mitigate potential governmental constraints to the provision of adequate affordable housing so the next part of the presentation I'm going to go through the different policy considerations that are outlined in your staff report before I begin I just wanted to briefly describe staff's approach in terms of coming up with these recommendations and we researched the neighboring cities and the county that were implementing these ordinances to get a better idea of what best practices were and different standards were and we wanted to be as consistent as possible with neighboring cities that were about the same size as us in addition to researching those cities we also had to take a look at the state laws especially the new ones that we found out about about a week and a half ago so we're going to have to with those laws we're going to have to wait till they're signed and see to see what we can and can't do and a lot of the areas are still up for interpretation there's some sections that you know appear to conflict with each other so we're not really sure how that's going to shake out yet so that will be another that's another unknown at this moment and then as staff prepares the updated regulations we'll take the information from tonight look at the state laws and come back with a draft ordinance for your review incorporating those changes in in your recommendations so these policy questions follow the questions in your report or the the policy questions in your report so the first question or the first policy topic is the maximum size for attached ADUs currently attached ADUs under our code cannot exceed 30% of the total living area up to 1200 square feet staffers recommending to follow what the new state law will be which is 50% of the living area with a maximum size of 850 square feet for a one-bedroom or 1,000 square feet for two or more bedrooms in terms of standards with other cities most of the cities are at the same place with the 50% of of living area for attached ADUs the second question is the maximum size for detached ADUs generally speaking cities are about 800 square feet and that's what we had proposed originally as part of the report again with these new changes we're recommending to be compliant with state law which is the 850 square feet for a one-bedroom and 1,000 square feet for two or more bedrooms and again the thought with this is these laws will become effective January 1st if signed by the governor is you know logistically to to not change your ordinance and then go back and change it again once they become effective so really trying to incorporate as much of those laws now versus versus later the next question is about ADUs above detached garages so currently if you have an ADU above a detached garage you can go up to 28 feet in height and that's because under our second unit code detached garages with ADUs had to meet main house setbacks so they're at the main house maximum height which is 28 feet well under the new state law the second floor can actually be five feet from the side property line and so imagine if you have a 28-foot tall two-story structure five feet from the property line so we're recommending lowering the maximum height for ADUs over garages down to 20 feet from 28 to help regulate privacy concerns and impacts on neighboring properties and then continuing on with the detached the ADUs above detached garages in terms of in terms of design to further regulate or protect privacy staff is recommending prohibiting all balconies second-story decks on ADUs above garages and then if there are any windows facing neighboring property lines either they must be opaque or the clear story so that whoever's inside can't see out into the neighbor's yards the next section is rental terms so as I mentioned our current code does not have any prohibitions on on rental time so there you can rent you know a space for one day or or a year staff is recommending to restrict ADU leases and rentals to be a minimum of 30 days or more there's concern that the ADUs are being primarily used for short-term rentals and it's really undermining the purpose of having housing extra housing stock in the region and that will also be compliant with state law other cities that adopt similar recommendations in terms of the rentals are Foster City Belmont and San Mateo so another item we are putting up for discussion is providing an incentive for affordable units so currently we can count the ADUs within our regional housing numbers in terms of units built but we'd really like to have a way to de-restrict certain units that that the owners are willing to to provide at a lower affordability so or I should say higher affordability so our proposal is to offer a 10% increase in the size of the ADU if the affordable housing if the ADU is used for affordable housing at the low income level and that that translates to 80% of the area medium income so that is something that as far as we know only Burlingame does something similar to this where they deed restrict or they do an agreement to to rent the property however as far as we know they actually haven't had anyone take them up on it yet so we're also open are there any other ideas if you're interested in providing incentives for for affordable second units and the last item is a rear yard area for detached ADUs currently our regulations permit construction of an ADU only in the rear half of the lot and on top of that only 30% of the required rear yard area which is 15 feet can be covered by that ADU what that does is if your if your rear yard is already taken up by the footprint of your garage it forces you to move your ADU excuse me above your garage because you don't have any more space in the back so we're suggesting upping that to 50% to encourage more single-story ADUs at the ground floor rather than than going above the garage and then just some general changes other areas within the code that aren't within the second dwelling unit ordinance that we are going to be looking at our non-conforming section says that existing homes that don't meet the two-car parking requirement could not build an ADU unless parking is first provided for the main house that would have to be removed under state law also administrative changes like changing second dwelling units to accessory dwelling units identifying any other administrative changes that need to be made because of the new state laws and then also looking at reformatting the ordinance to be a little bit more user-friendly and containing all the relevant information in one code section rather than in different sections throughout the code so in terms of discussion this evening staff has prepared to present the policy slides one by one and put them up for discussion one at a time if the chair decides to to do it that way just wanted to let you know that is available in terms of next steps tonight we have our study session as I mentioned we would come back in November or December for the the planning commission hearing on the ordinance move to city council hearings in January February March if everything moves along the new rules would be effective in March or April of 2020 and until that happens the state law will govern ADUs and then at the bottom is our website for ADUs and then the last thing I wanted to point out is there's going to be a second unit resource fair on October 13th in Redwood City and that flyer is on our website and there's also some flyers at the back of the room if anyone is interested in that and with that I'm available for any questions or comments thank you
Andrea kind of a threshold question could you click back two slides to the calendar and I appreciate that as staff has considered these items the all that's up in the air with state law right now is being considered as well but you know it's something of an asterisk because we don't know exactly where the where the state's going to come down can you provide any color how the state's action and their expected calendar and how that affects kind of how you all have laid out how how this should unfold I mean it seems to me that we should know what the state's doing before we try to act so we don't have to repeat all this in six months
yeah I think I'm one of the I think this is you know sort of the optimistic schedule if we can get everything figured out with the state one of the challenges is because there's so many laws proposed that haven't been signed yet there's different outcomes depending on for example if one law's passed and then the other's not or both are passed there's a lot of different complications and and kind of intricacies with that so we will be working with 21 Elements who's been our resource and and helps with all of the cities to get a better idea on interpretations in terms of timing Josh I don't know if you have any updates on what this is Josh Abrams
Josh Abrams with 21 Elements so the governor has until October 15th to sign
So the governor has until October 15th to sign any of the bills he'll sign, and they would take effect January 1st if he signs them.
I see. So we'll actually know this month what's, what's going to be approved or not approved in this regard. And then how soon until a new slate could come around from the state on ADUs?
My sense is the legislature is tired and wouldn't do another round next year, but in theory, they could do another round next year. So there could be, this round, if the governor signs it, would be due, the changes would be required by January 1st. So then, if they, in the next legislative cycle, if they make more changes, it would be a year from January when those would go into effect.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
One quick question. You mentioned the 30-day minimum rental, no short-term rentals, which I think is a good idea. Does it then fall to the city to enforce, to make sure that that is being upheld by all of the folks renting them out?
Likely that would be enforced through conditions of approval for each of the units, and then based, my guess would be on a complaint basis from neighbors, or if the city sees it happening. But it would be restricted through the approval and through a restrictive covenant, that that's the minimum rental time.
I had one question. Accessory dwelling units certainly are in line with the city's goals and objectives about helping to do our part on the present housing crisis, and this does afford a flexible, interesting approach to that. But it, from what I can see, the staff recommendations are principally how to best sort of manage and control. I don't really see anything by way of incentive here. Did staff consider incentives to encourage accessory dwelling units in any way?
We, the incentive we thought of was for the affordable unit. What we've actually seen is with the passage of the state laws last year, a pretty big increase in the number of units. So we do, we do bring them up at the counter when we talk to people and ask people if they've thought about doing them. But in terms of specific incentives, that wasn't considered as part of this, but we could definitely take that into consideration.
And maybe just for color, so when this says an accessory dwelling unit could be up to a maximum size, that reduces the availability of that footprint from the floor-area ratio under our code, is that correct?
Currently, yes. This is one of the questions that is up for interpretation that Josh and I were actually discussing earlier. It appears that, under the new law, if you're maxing out your floor area or lot coverage, we would still have to allow up to an 800-square-foot unit. So if, let's say, you had 600 square feet left remaining on your max floor area, you could theoretically do an extra 200 square feet under the new state law.
So just to be clear, if you've maxed out under city ordinance the size of your floor area, you could then add 800 or potentially 1,200 if the new law passes? Is that correct?
So in that case, it's 800 max, but yes, on top of, yeah.
And what makes that 800 max and not the increased amount?
It's because you're, you're basically getting an exception to the, to the lot coverage or open space or whatever the requirement is. If you're going above it, then you're limited to the 800 square feet.
And that's a nuance of state law that isn't spelled out here, is that right?
Yeah, so we, yeah, we kind of tried to just hit the highlights. But yes, that's correct.
So it's 800 is kind of the hard exception max? And does that apply to lot coverage as well?
My understanding is lot coverage, floor area, open space landscaping, I mean, pretty much any.
I see. So basically, you can design to, like everything we did last year about housing, single-family housing sizes, you can basically get right on that envelope and then plus 800 feet. That's...
My guess would be, and I think we'd have to discuss this, you know, sort of, one of the interpretations is, there's a difference if you're coming in and you're already built out and proposing an ADU versus having the floor area to build it and proposing to build your house to that and then an ADU. My understanding, it's kind of existing conditions versus what you're proposing, or perhaps that's not.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand how that could be a distinction.
Even that was a core question.
Yeah.
It's a freebie.
I don't think that's clear at this point. I think lawyers, I think we would need to get some guidance from the Department of Housing and Community Development. But one interpretation would be that you could max out your house and then add 800 square feet. Cities would still be able to require, you'd still have to, like, keep your wastewater, your stormwater on site. So there are some other building code things that cities could do to affect that, but that is one interpretation of the state law.
Like, before we come back to reconsider this more formally, will we be in a position to understand where we're at on that? That seems pretty critical to this whole discussion.
I suspect the state won't come up with guidance, but we, I think housing lawyers will have some more time to digest it before. So I think we'll know more, but not really have a definitive opinion from the state.
Okay.
A question, the ADU, can it have passageways between the, between the ADU unit and the rest of the house?
It can, but the city can no longer require a connection between them. So cities used to be able to require a breezeway or passageway to be considered.
I was thinking, in the, say, ADU that's integral to the house, can it just be one with the house? And...
Yeah, I mean, we've had ones that have come through that there's, you know, a door separating basically the unit from the house, or perhaps there's a laundry room that both share and each have a door. But yes, you could move throughout the house with it.
I guess the reason I'm asking is whether the ADU rules could be used to circumvent the normal zoning restrictions. And if I want to have a larger house, not necessarily to rent out, then I could call it an ADU. And so there's really nothing to stop that from happening?
I think that's definitely a concern with these new state laws. The one thing would be having to include cooking facilities, but again, I mean, that's really, you know, the only, the only difference between that and...
I mean, it would be against the law, but, but hard to enforce, I guess would be the...
It would be, yeah.
Actually, I don't think that would be against the law. I mean, we're just, you know, it would have to take the form factor of an ADU, but I don't think anyone's going to require specific use of that.
Right.
And I don't think there's a law saying you have to use it for alternate housing. So it is a valid concern.
Right. So it's, yeah, so you could, it's a free way to get 800 square feet above the norm, above the current limit.
So could I tack on 800 square foot to my house and have my parents live there and charge them rent?
Yes.
And one, one big house, and that's cool?
Yeah, it's interesting. There's lots of...
Or live there and they don't pay rent.
Yeah. Or I live there and they have, yeah, right.
Yeah. Well, that's actually a stated goal of ADUs, is exactly that, multi-generational housing.
We're just, you know, anecdotally, we're seeing a lot of new homes come in with a master suite on the first floor and also one on the second floor. And we've been hearing a lot of it is because of the multi-generational families and wanting to have that.
How many ADUs do we have in San Carlos today?
So in terms of ADUs, the total number, I don't have, I have the numbers from 2017, which is the primary, the primary amount. So in 2017, before the big housing changes, we had about 12 ADUs. In 2018, which was after the kind of first round, we had 26. And then this year, we've had nine approved and permitted, and we currently have about 10 under review right now. So we're at about 19 right now.
This year?
This year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in the last three years, we've been at about 60. And I would say before that, just knowing sort of what's on the list, I'd say we maybe had about 30 from the early 2000s. I mean, there weren't, there weren't a lot at all.
I'm a little surprised with those. I thought under our current code, there was like only one ADU per 600 feet allowed or something like that. Did that, I know state law's going to preempt that, but I'm surprised we've had 20 a year with that restriction.
So a few things. So the state law does preempt it, so that actually got rid of that requirement, the parking requirement in terms of, you know, having to provide a parking space in certain instances. The size of the units, especially detached, went from 640 up to 1,200 under the state law. And we also now don't review them at the planning phase unless it's with a new house, so people are able to go straight for permits. So I think all those factors combined have really, you know, led to the increase in production.
Does this data reflect units that have not received permit? Because there are many units that are currently existing that have never received permit and are being used as ADUs. So what are the numbers coming from?
Yeah, we'll have a public comment in just a bit, but appreciate that if you can hold that question. And more generally, if anyone is interested in speaking this evening, in the corner you'll find speaker cards that if you can fill out, you'll be called upon. And we appreciate the great turnout tonight.
Could you explain the review process a little bit more, that it doesn't go through the normal review process? Because one concern is architectural compatibility with the neighborhood. And I understand there can be quite a wide range of ADU styles. What would stop having a trailer parked in your front yard, or, as an extreme example? So what's the process for approval?
So for ADUs by themselves without, for example, a new house or addition, they do go straight to building. However, we still review that at the planning phase for compatibility with state law, but also design, design review and design criteria. So making sure that it not only is meeting the development criteria, but also the design itself, meeting, for example, the existing style of the home, you know, minimizing impacts, things like that. If it is part of an addition or new home, where planning approval is required for the other piece of it, we do review it at a planning phase, but because we're required to look at them ministerially, we basically, for example, if an item's going to RDRC for a new home, we mentioned to the committee there's an ADU proposed, but the committee and also staff for other items isn't allowed to really make changes to it if it's protected by the state law. So we can say, yes, there's one proposed, but you can't deny it. So it's kind of included as an informational item, but in terms of like design of the new house, they couldn't really say that ADU's too big if it meets the standard requirements. I'm not sure if that answered. Yeah.
It helps, but, but they do go through the design, a design review.
As much as we can do it with the, with the state laws.
The specifications of the state law, but in terms of the more qualitative compatibilities.
Yeah, we definitely want them to try to, you know, blend with the existing style of the house, things like that.
And if I had a garage detached in the back, could I like knock it down and put a new one up four foot from the back and the side now, and so long as it had an ADU up top?
Well, so it's kind of two different things. So if you tear down a detached garage, you could put the new one up with an ADU on top. You could also demo it and rebuild in the same place, just an ADU, under this new law. So you could do either or, basically.
And now, in the, in the, the building inspection process, you know, making sure that if there's supposed to be a kitchen, there's actually a stove, I don't know what does, is a kitchen defined? And could it be a microwave and a hot plate?
It depends. So we have, currently, when we look at ADUs, we want some sort of fixed cooking device, whether it's a stove or a countertop stove. I'm not sure if the new law defines a kitchen specifically, or just says cooking facilities.
And, and is that something that we're within our rights as a city to say what that is?
I'm not totally sure. I'd have to check. I think for a junior, junior ADUs are generally, cities, they're optional for cities. And I think if you allow a junior ADU, you, whatever type of cooking facilities they want to provide is what they do. And I, I don't know, I would have to check about the other, the regular ADU.
So that's something we could look into and bring back when we come back.
I would appreciate more info there, because I could see two opposite scenarios. One, that the kitchen unit may be so informal that it could be hazard, I mean, if there's a plug-in hot plate or something that, so, and then getting back at the skirting, the normal zoning constraints, if there's some minimum required for it to be truly a separately rentable unit, what, what rules would be applicable there? I'm not sure. I don't know what, I don't know where I would fall on that right now. And I can imagine there could be scenarios with in-laws that are not planning to cook, so you wouldn't want to require a full kitchen, but still.
Well, you could imagine a scenario, you know, you put up a really nice 800-square-foot plate room, you put a counter in it, a sink, a hot plate on top, throw up a bed, well, you know, and then, oh, I guess I didn't rent it, so great place for the kids to play.
Right.
And all of the work we did last year, which I think we're all mindful of...
That's correct.
...is, is not honored.
Right. We want to make sure the ADU path is used for its intended...
Yeah.
...purpose, as opposed to just a way to expand, although it's hard to draw that line sometimes.
Thank you. You know, I do think, just because of the importance of these issues, and we appreciate your recommendations from staff, I think going through each one one by one would be helpful and probably help us generate more specific questions.
Great. And did you want me to do that first, or did you want to do the public comment first? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's, let's hear from the public first, and then we can dive into each one. That's a good recommendation. Terrific. So we've heard from staff on accessory dwelling units, and if anyone would like to speak, if the speaker cards could please be called up. And I don't have a lot of them right now, I only have two. But if we start having a lot of speaker cards, we will have to limit the time, but we'll see how it goes. Oh, we do have a lot of speaker cards, so, yeah. So, yes, I will start a clock. We will try to hold to two minutes per speaker, but we do appreciate everyone's interest in being heard this evening. And forgive me on names, is Mrs. Praspyowski, did I get that right? 1820 San Carlos Avenue? Thank you. Appreciate it.
So just really quickly, we are in the process of trying to get an AUD approved above our detached garage right now. We've spent a lot of time with the planning department, it's been really helpful. One thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, because I think it's important, is the overlap between these rules and the hillside overlay requirements. So as you likely know, in the hillside overlay district, you can have a garage in the front of your house. And we have such a property and have been hit with kind of the unique inter, sorry, have been hit with the unique intersection between being able to have a garage in the front of our house, being encouraged to build an AUD, which we want to build for my parents to join us living here, but are subject to a 19-foot, second-story setback requirement, which basically means that our AUD will be oddly shaped because our front property line is not straight. And it also took away over a third of our 20-by-20 structure. So it makes it really challenging. We either have to decide to straighten it and lose even more square footage into the 200, 300 range, or we have to live with this oddly shaped structure in the front of our house, which I don't think any of our neighbors would appreciate. So that's the battle we're currently facing in trying to figure out how to make something look good and still meet all the requirements. And so we would encourage, you know, the director to be able to make exceptions, because the director can already approve a garage in the front of the house. We think the director should also have discretion as to the front setback requirement. And then with the new proposal on the deck, if we were proposing as a potential fix to have a deck in the front so that this weird shape could be hidden by a deck that faces the street, so if you remove that, then it's even harder to meet both requirements at once. And then reducing the height is also challenging, because one of the things we wanted to do was match our pitch of our roof to the secondary unit. And if you reduce the height, we'd pretty much have to have a flat roof. So I think you guys should think about how those requirements actually play out, especially
Thank you. Next, we can hear from Jennifer Durking.
I tried to very mind at the bottom, so I'd hear everybody else's comments first, but that's what I get for that. Well, I'm, I'm fairly new to this. I've done a lot of research on ADUs. I spent about three years, kind of going through a process of figuring out how to do an ADU on our property, have about a quarter of a million dollars in the bank ready to spend today, but there's just seemed to be so many little red tape things. So we have a similar situation where we're near a creek, we have a garage, it's detached, it's kind of the perfect footprint, but we can't put a loft in it, because it's within five feet of the creek, not 25 feet, which would be in the street. So it's just, all these little unique situations make me wonder if there needs to be somebody appointed to help evaluate those. I suspect that the 20 or so ADUs you're doing a year could probably be tenfold, like Portland had, when they started reducing fees or taking a real proactive approach to ADUs. So that's just my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Peter Hope-Billion, did I get that right? Okay, sorry.
So as a person in the real estate community and that also lives on a hillside, and I'm sure you're going to hear a lot of this, one of the concerns that came up was if we allow some of the ADUs where the park, where you can, you don't have to add additional parking, some of the hillsides where the streets get very narrow, that would create, and it's, there are already one and a half lanes right now, and if a fire truck comes through, which, or an ambulance, which occasionally happens, say, on our street, it doesn't take very much extra parking to start blocking that. So I just didn't, I just kind of wanted to touch base on the planning side, where that would be something, as we get into those more narrow streets, like maybe there's something where you say, if your street's this wide, then you have to acquire parking, or I don't, I'm not telling you what to do, but. And then the second one really came down to privacy on the hillside. So we actually ran into a situation, we were putting in our deck, and we walked out to like, kind of where we thought it was going to be, and I was looking straight down into my neighbor's house. And so I think as we add ADUs on stuff on hillsides, there needs to be some consideration in the planning that goes into how much we can see into one another's actual homes and yards and stuff like that. And I just, I didn't hear it, but I'm sure you guys are like, ah, but I just thought I would leave that out there for your notes to think about on the hillside stuff, so that's it.
Thank you. Una Kinsella.
Hi, my name's Una Kinsella, and I'm an architect that does quite a bit of work locally in San Carlos. And I haven't done any, I haven't submitted any ADU projects, but I have a lot of clients who are interested in this. So one of the comments that I have, and I just wanted to clarify, one of the things that you had entry up there about the off-street parking. So it sounds like one of the requirements that you are going to make on top of what the state already requires is that if you convert an attached garage to an ADU, the only way you can do it is if you have off-street parking that meets the current parking standards. Is that correct? Which I believe would be 20 by 20.
Yeah, sure thing.
So through the chair, currently, that's correct. However, the new state law would get rid of that. So basically, if you convert a garage, you cannot require replacement parking.
Oh, okay, because I thought I saw, sorry, then I might be misspeaking here. I thought I saw in your, one of your last slides, that you would require, if they didn't have parking, they wouldn't be able to convert their garage.
That's in the code now. So that's one of the things we'll be having to change.
Thank you. Because that's one of the challenges on these houses, like the houses that are built all in the White Oaks area, there's, some of them have decent-sized driveways, but the driveway that's inside the property line is actually really short, and you're never going to meet the parking standard inside the property line. So that's one of the things on many of the projects I'm working on, is that you can fit a car in the driveway, and that's not an issue, but within the property line, I have, if you have a right-of-way that comes into your driveway seven or eight feet, you have like, maybe a 15-foot parking spot inside your property line. And if, if that requirement is no longer an issue, then you're going to be able to convert garages in the White Oaks area. But if that is, if you do have to provide off-street parking that meets standard requirements, there's going to be a lot of properties that will not be able to convert their garages to ADUs. So thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. Karen Tuzman.
My name's Karen Tuzman. I'm a renter in San Carlos, and I just wanted to voice general support for the city taking this on and really wanting to encourage ADU development and support for the state policies that are removing red tape. And just kind of, as a, as a renter, as someone who's looked at ADUs as a viable, you know, housing option at various points, just really encouraging you to remove restrictions, especially sort of broad strokes ones wherever possible, just hearing about some of the specific challenges people would run into with like, a broad, you know, broad stricter height requirements. It just seems like there could be opportunities for more individual negotiations in settings where privacy might take a role, but maybe not so many broad strokes to cancel things out overall. And I just want to say that I'm speaking on behalf of the Peninsula Young Democrats, and we believe the current housing crisis must be addressed by preserving and drastically increasing affordable and market rate housing stock and expanding tenant protections. And this necessitates dismantling exclusionary zoning, supporting economically diverse neighborhoods through multifamily housing, streamlining housing approvals, stabilizing rents, and preventing displacement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific, thank you. It's nice to hear from a member of our rental community. Mary Wilson.
I'm really glad to be here. There are just four things that would concern me about the law. First, parking. I understand that new parking cannot be required under the state law, but I believe the law does allow the city to require that existing on-premises parking, garages, driveways are used to the extent possible. And from a practical perspective, we live on a street that's got parking on only one side of the street. We do have an ADU nearby. It's a neighbor that, to my knowledge, has never used their garage for parking. They, in fact, rarely use their driveway for parking, and before the ADU put their cars in the street. Now, sometimes, it's as many as two, three additional cars in the street with one side of parking, including with seniors on a hillside that have to get in and out and have to try to jostle so that their caregiver can get in and out and get parking. So to the extent possible, please require people, as part of the ADU conditions, to use existing parking on premises as much as possible. Second thing is, the intent of the law is to provide longer-term housing. I'm all for the city requiring at least 30-day rentals. I think that's not in the present ordinance, so that's a really good thing. I don't know if state law will allow you to make it, that there has to be at least an additional, initial rental term, say, three or six months. If that's permissible, I would encourage that, because the intent of the law is not to create hotel-like options or Airbnb-style options, but to create longer-term, more meaningful housing, and to maintain at the same time, as the way the city has put it, the character of the neighborhood. I also would encourage strict conformity to existing regulations and whatever ADUs are allowed. So for example, someone that's in current code enforcement, or is not complying with existing laws, that as part of the permitting process, they're required to be compliant. In other words, this shouldn't be a situation that just exasperates and multiplies the type of deficiencies. And then finally, because the purpose of the law is to create more housing, really encourage trying to bolt down to the extent possible what is meant by a second rental unit, because I see the proposed ordinance would not allow a third and a fourth rental unit, but it would be good to define that. It would be good to define kitchen, and it would be good to define the things that would help to encourage that the purpose of the law is met. But I'm in favor of an ordinance that addresses those things.
Thank you. Darlene O'Neil.
Thank you. I also have a safety concern in regards to cars and parking. I live on a street where a large ADU was just built, two-bedroom, and four additional adults moved in there. But the problem is, four additional cars came with the four additional adults. Only one off-street parking place was built. So that means three additional cars on the street. The street already has wall-to-wall parking on both sides. Two-way street is already only wide enough for one car. Additional ADUs means additional cars and additional safety problems on the streets. I would like and hope that you would consider adding a requirement, that there be more on-site, off-the-street parking for these ADUs, so that our streets can be safe.
Thank you for that. Bill McDonald.
Thank you for the meeting tonight. I just want to echo the previous lady's comments about parking in San Carlos. We have very narrow streets. This is not Woodside or Portola Valley, where they have big spaces, you can get cars on, off the streets. When we go home tonight, we'll probably be dodging cars coming the other way. And you pull in, or they pull in, and hopefully, everybody is doing what they should be doing. But I'm really concerned that we're going to have a whole lot more street parking than we have now. And if driving down the streets, people don't use their driveways, they don't use their garage, except for storage, and I don't know if there's anything you can do about that. But I think that parking and our narrow streets is a very, going to be a very big problem, that I hope some way you can solve it. That's my comments on it.
Okay, thank you. That was the last of the speaker cards. Would anyone else here like, oh.
You've got more.
We have more. Terrific. Kara Vonck.
Came in a little late there. I was wondering if staff could review all of the parking requirements under the new law. As I understand it, if you convert a garage to an ADU, then no parking is required for the existing residents, residents. So what about an ADU built in a backyard? Do you need to require parking for that, whoever's going to be living there? And what if it's an older house, and there's only one parking spot right now, and you build an ADU? Do you have to provide any kind of parking? And then, somebody raised another issue on it, that just brought this to mind. Can you build an ADU, let's say, in your backyard, or convert a garage, and then also do a JDU? So you would have two rental units in the R1 zone? Thank you.
Thank you. David Pollock.
For what it's worth, it's David Pollock. Thank you. It wasn't going to be my original question or comment, but I live on Rosewood Avenue, and not, I don't have an ADU. And parking already on the street is, is pretty crazy. Most of my neighbors have an average of three to five cars, and maybe one of them is in the, in the driveway. So I don't really see the relationship between requiring any parking minimums for new ADUs, because the situation is, is what it is already, and probably don't really need to do anything specific around ADUs that's not going to address the, the larger challenges about parking in San Carlos. The other question I had is the possibility of incorporating, putting together an amnesty program for existing ADUs that are not up to code. East Palo Alto does it, unincorporated, San Mateo County is part of the one-stop shop program with the county. And I'm not necessarily suggesting that all of those units be brought up to code, per se, but there's a lot of, you know, safety issues and challenges. People are living in those units, and they're a necessary part of our housing situation in San Carlos. And if people aren't allowed some sort of amnesty, it's going to be an additional safety hazards and challenges for the city with existing properties. Thank you.
Thank you. William Fairclough.
I'm a member of the Transport and Circulation Committee. And it's kind of surprising, I thought this meeting was going to be sort of about planning and houses, and I, what I'm hearing from everybody is a problem with parking. And this, I'm sure, is going to be referred to the TCC. I'm wondering if, if there's anything that you people do, that you put something together, that you, sort of a document or whatever, an idea to the TCC to consider this. Do you, do you have anything that, in mind that you do? I will certainly talk to people about it, but I wonder if.
Well, it's a good thought. It's something we'll certainly consider.
Yeah. Okay, well, we can get something done. Thank you.
Terrific. I believe that's the end of the speaker cards. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak this evening? Feel free. Do you, do you need to fill out a speaker card, though, and then approach the microphone? Did you turn in a speaker card?
I didn't realize you had cards.
Oh, in the back corner. If you can, feel free to address us now and then fill out your speaker card, that'd be fine.
Dr. Botery, I live on Melundy Drive, and we've already experienced the traffic issues by people who have single-family homes, and they rent out multiple units. And so instead of having two cars, there are now four cars. Now, it just so happens that the people that are renting the unit happen to be single people, but they could easily be multiple couples, in which case, you now add four cars to a place that originally had two cars. Now, these people do not park their car in the driveway, so what they do is they park it on the street, and so they park it in people's driveways. And another issue that we haven't addressed is the fact that San Carlos has the highest fire danger in the state of California right now, because of the traffic congestion. And so now, you're planning to add much more traffic congestion, as was already witnessed by the people here, which is to say that fire, well, first of all, you won't be able to get out, and secondly, the fire and rescue people won't be able to get in. So the fact that you are creating a situation that endangers the public safety is of tremendous concern to me, because as you probably recall, my house burned down in paradise, and a thousand people lost their homes. And San Carlos is ripe for exactly the same situation, and you're adding to the tremendous risk of all of the residents here by traffic congestion.
Thank you for that. Please do fill out a speaker card. Was there anyone else? Sure, approach the podium. If anyone else would like to speak though, I would ask you to fill out a speaker card before you approach the podium.
Appreciate it. My name is John Burlett. I'm on Palm Avenue, just up the street here. I just want to reiterate a lot of the same concerns about parking. Our street is already lined with cars on both sides. The fire department requires a minimum width of 20 feet. You take four feet and four feet, at least a minimum per car on each side. You've got a truck that's maybe five, six feet. You're already close to that 20-foot minimum distance between, for a street. Adding additional ADUs, I would ask and urge if you do have this codified into the ordinance, that you take into consideration, really have to be at a street-by-street level, and/or at least consider the possibility of permitted parking in the city of San Carlos, as was considered and actually implemented in Redwood City. The only way you can enforce this is to make the streets basically enforced by city, or County San Mateo and Sheriff's Department to ensure that you're not running into a situation where it's unsafe, as the gentleman just said. We live in a high-fire danger area. So again, I'd really encourage and ask that you consider that for any kind of approval. Given again, the influx state-of-state rules about parking requirements, it's really critical to have that. So I appreciate that. I'll fill out my card. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Through the chair, I also forgot to mention that an email came in under public comment, and a copy is on the dais for you, from a local designer who also expressed concerns with designing ADUs above garages in the hillside, just the challenges that come along with that. So I wanted to mention that as part of the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that. There are no other speakers. We will close public comment at this time?
I move we close public comment.
I'll second that.
All in favor of that, say aye. Aye? Any nays? Public comment is closed. So I do think we heard an awful lot of concerns about parking. Andrea, if you could, I do think we would like to go over each of the staff recommendations one by one and get into a little bit more detail. In particular, would like to understand what the parking requirement is. So maybe if you could begin with a brief overview of, is the state law, how does that exactly relate to our existing requirements about parking and, and the recommendations? Like, if you could just summarize what the parking requirements are now and how they might change under this, that would be very helpful, I think, for everyone.
Sure. And if I could, right before that, I did get an answer to an earlier question about how many ADUs we have. My colleague was able to get that information. So as far as recorded and what we have record of, we have 132. Forty-nine of those have been since 2017 with the state law, and they go back to 1986, it looks like. And again, those are the ones we have record of, so I'm sure there are other ones as well. In terms of parking, I was also given information, well, I'll save this to the end, but some, some things that the city can do. In terms of current parking requirements, we can require replacement parking for houses to be on property. So as Una was mentioning, if you convert a garage, we can require that that replacement parking be in the driveway within the property lines. And that will change with the new law. So the new law does not allow that. In terms of other parking requirements with the new law, there's several provisions that provide exemptions for the ADU parking. Those include if the ADU is within a half-mile of walking distance of public transit, if it's located within an architecturally and historic, significant historic district, if it's part of the existing or proposed residence or accessory structure, when on-street parking permits are required but not offered to the occupant of the accessory unit. And to follow up on that particular one, Josh Abrams mentioned to me that cities can implement parking permit programs and not allow the ADU owners to have access to it. So they, in effect, would not have to provide parking, but they also wouldn't be able to park their car in that, that parking permit area. So the city wouldn't require a space for them, but they would be prohibited from parking in the neighborhood. If there's a car-share vehicle within one block of the unit, it also could not, we also could not require parking for, for that as well.
Do we have any follow-up questions about parking?
Andrea, I just wanted to clarify, make sure I heard that correctly. So if you could, we could require parking permits as a city, and we could deny those permits to ADU residents?
I'll let Josh answer. That was my understanding.
I mean, I think reading the state code, it says something like, if you have a permit parking system and you don't allow ADU owners to partake of that system, you can't require any parking for them. So I read that to say you can have a permit parking system where only residents of the main house can get those, those permits for street parking.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm not sure I like that idea, but I just wanted to clarify the... I'm with you. It seems, you know, we're trying to encourage housing. And, you know, I suppose the right answer is, how do we encourage housing without vehicles? But, you know, that's probably a subject of a different, different evening. Could I just, Andrea, can you clarify the, maybe this is redundant. The new law will not allow us to require on-premise parking for, if an ADU was built and it takes out a garage. Is that, did I get that right?
That's correct.
So therefore, therefore, not only the people who are parking in the garage, they'll be on the street, and the people moving into the ADU, they'll also be on the street.
So there's certain instances where we can still require one parking space per ADU unit. Those spaces are, or those times are pretty limited because when you take into account ADUs within a half-mile of transit or any of the other requirements, it kind of shrinks it down. So let's say you were to have an ADU where we could require that because it's not meeting any of the other exemptions, and they convert the garage to an ADU. They would not have to replace the garage parking, but they would have to provide one onsite parking space for the ADU. So in effect, it would, you know, be one new space, loss of one or two. So kind of a wash.
Okay. Thank you. Well, while we're still talking about parking, it seems, given the state law, unavoidable that there would be a downstream effect of having more cars competing for spots on the streets. And so how the city would address that seems like it'd be something to make us all comfortable. We might want to have a plan for how that would be addressed, particularly in regards to the safety. I could imagine that if it's unsafe to have too many cars legally parked, maybe the parking shouldn't be legal there. I mean, you would need to ensure fire trucks can get through, et cetera. So in a way, the gentleman from the Transportation and Circulation Committee, I think, has a point that there's, there's going to be an effect of these housing rules, which, you know, on the whole, I think are a great thing. But there'll be more cars and we need to deal with that in a systematic way. So it would be nice if the city could kind of bring forward a plan for that in parallel with the, with the ADU plans.
Yeah, I would just echo that. I think what'd be useful is, when we consider this matter again, if there could actually just be a section about parking, like in each of these situations of ADU attached, detached, conversion of a garage, like what's the current parking and what, what our proposed changes would do? And then what the state law may preempt if it's... I guess when we meet again, we'll know if that state law was signed in or not. So that's good. And I think that'll help everyone just to, to understand exactly where we're at. And I do think it's, it is a valid traffic and circulation issue, especially with the safety concerns. Is there a particular way staff is planning to solicit input from the Transportation and Circulation Committee?
Mr. Chairman, you can ask us to do that, and we'd certainly do that if you asked us to.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have the, the ability, the right to link? Gee, if you get, if you build an ADU, you can only have one vehicle associated with it? I don't know that I would, but can I? Can we?
I'm going to defer to Josh. See if he knows the answer. I'm not sure.
It'd be a very hard provision to enforce and I don't, let me, let me double check. I don't think you would be able to do that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it just seemed to me that, you know, we have a lot of these things that are... If you're in a street where you've got a good bit of parking, there aren't many of them, it might not matter, but on a complaint basis, maybe that's a way to encourage folks to respect their neighbors that way, if it were a condition of getting the ADU. So if you could find out, that'd be great.
Yeah, my thought on that would be, that could only be in the context of a permitting process. If you provided permits for parking for everyone in town, but that, then you could only allow one per ADU. But I don't think we can just say you can only have one car just because you live in an ADU. That's, it's a good question, but I'd be surprised if it could be done without actual parking permits.
And, and to build on that, when we're talking about the, the new chapter and relating to parking for the next time we meet, I'm wondering if there's a way to build in there. I'd be curious, what are our neighboring cities doing with this issue? Have any of the cities figured out a way to incentivize homeowners to add another parking space on their property? And do they get some sort of leeway in building their ADU if they provide that parking? Or has any other city looked at this important issue and what have they done?
To kind of build on that request, in California, we sort of have a single wave of these new rules being implemented, so we can't benefit from experience of adjacent cities from, from the lessons learned. But one of our public commenters mentioned Portland had expanded this. I'm wondering if we could look a little further afield to see what are the downstream impacts from this that we might want to anticipate now?
Yeah, terrific. And I think we can come back to kind of larger, general concerns. But for now, let's dive a little deeper on each of these recommendations. Andrea, if you could just briefly walk us through each one again, and I think we will have more detailed questions this time.
Sure. So the first question relates to size for attached ADUs. Current regulations, which is our municipal code, require that the size does not exceed 30% of the total living area, up to 1,200 square feet. Staff is proposing to increase that to be compliant with state law, limiting attached ADUs to 50% of the living area with the maximum allowable size of 850 square feet for one-bedroom ADU or 1,000 square feet for two or more, more-bedroom ADU.
I had a question on that. How do easements factor into all of this? Is this a setback requirement from the fence? Or is this a setback requirement? Let's say I have a backyard that's got eight feet of easement along the back because there's a sewer line back there. Is, is that taken into account at all with the percentages and the setbacks?
So we measure setbacks from the property line. However, if your easement is greater than that setback, you'd have to, to follow the more conservative amount. So if you had a four-foot rear setback, but an eight-foot easement, you'd have to be at eight feet, just to clear the easement.
And you wouldn't need anything additional beyond... Okay, thank you.
And just to go along with that, same with lot size. We don't penalize you for the area of the easement. We count your gross area.
Okay. Thank you. Very helpful.
My only question here, so, and this gets at maybe the definition of kitchen and other definitions. I mean, how is ADU actually defined? Like, what, what is an ADU? Is that, is that already set forth?
So the definition is an attached or detached residential dwelling unit that provides complete independent living facilities for one or more people and is located on a lot with a proposed or existing primary residence. It shall include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation on the same parcel as the, the main house. So that's, that's the state definition of an accessory unit.
I see. And it just says eating condition, so that is pretty loosely defined.
And cooking, yeah, but, but nothing beyond that.
Okay. So we can get into this further, but I, I think it is worthwhile to have a city definition of what a kitchen is or what eating facilities are. I think that would serve a good purpose through this.
Yeah, great. I was going to raise that as an ask for staff. If you could propose some language, that'd be great. And is, ADU must have a bathroom, right? So again, is that, is there a definition? Like, could it be, you know, a plastic box with a toilet shower all in one thing? And it's three by three, and does that qualify?
Or does a half-bath qualify?
I suspect, we would, I think that we would talk to the building officials, but I suspect where it actually get, maybe already have been codified is the building code. And the building code would define a bathroom as a real bathroom. It would probably allow a shower instead of a bath. But, I mean, would the building code define cooking facilities? I think it probably would. And, sorry, I suspect. We should check with the building officials, but I suspect maybe we're covered because, because of the building code.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number two.
So this is maximum size for detached ADUs. So again, it's the same recommendation for the, for the attached units. 850 square feet for a one-bedroom and 1,000 square feet for a two- or more-bedroom ADU. And staff is recommending basically sort of the, the minimum size allowed under, under the state law.
When, when we spent our time working on single-family housing, one of the most helpful things, or a very helpful thing from staff were examples of, I'll call it the worst case. So what if this policy were used by a developer or a homeowner and their architect and pushed it to the limit, what would that look like? And for a couple of different-sized properties. And I think particularly, we were concerned about some of the smaller properties in the flat section. So one of my asks of staff would be, can we, could we get some assistance in imagining what a fully utilized FAR would look like? And then tacked on a 1,000-square-foot, two-bedroom unit onto that? And then I guess, yeah, I'm not sure if there's any height. There was some conversation around height in hillside, but maybe I'll defer to my colleagues on that. One is coming up. But I guess with the state law, we will be required to allow these square footages to be added. And so perhaps our role can be to ensure that, when that square footage is added, that it really serves its intended purpose of being an ADU with its broader benefits as opposed to perhaps just an expansion of a, of a house for the original occupants. Yeah, I, I agree with you. This is, you know, it's, to your point, that we can't not have it. But I think one of the benefits of the public forum is to sort of go in eyes wide open so that we, as a planning, RDRC, and the public sort of know what the implications are. So I'm with you. Yes, we, it won't be an opportunity to say no, but it'd be good to know how it might show up.
And actually, just thinking... And actually, just thinking about it, because we did spend such time and effort and community input on the single-family housing size initiative. So the state's mandating 800-square-foot ADUs, and we came up just last year with new floor area ratios. Not that necessarily want to open that up, but just, would it be possible to have our floor area ratio taken into account whether or not an ADU is being proposed? Or does that not make sense, simply because you could build to the floor area ratio and then later come in with your ADU, and we'd have to allow it at that point?
So I'm not really sure. I mean, my thought was, if someone's coming forward with a proposal, and there is the space to count it within the max FAR, then possibly we could, but it sounded like we might not be able to do that. That basically, we have to allow people to exceed the FAR with their ADU, even if it's proposed at the same time as something else. Is that...
I understand where you're going with that dual level, and I don't, I just don't know. I suspect the state, I suspect their intent was to not allow that, but we'd have to really dig into the letter of what they pass.
As I was saying, it occurred to me that we probably could do that with regard to the FAR, and then anyone that thought through it would simply propose their primary structure and then come back a year later, and they would then get the additional 800 feet. So, yeah.
Because the conversion can actually give you more square footage than if you were doing it at the outset of a new construction, I wonder if it would be appropriate to have a time limit, time interval required before you could count something as a conversion. So in other words, you can't just build a new house, and then day two, say, I'm putting on another bedroom because it's a conversion, or taking away my parking spot in the garage, and so it's a way to circumvent. I don't know. Otherwise, the distinction between a conversion and new construction, there would be, you'd essentially apply the conversion rules to new construction as well, with a, with little, with the, not much trouble, I suppose.
If I were to want to build one, and I gain approval, what actually am I agreeing to do with that unit? Is it a legal obligation or a moral obligation?
To rent it?
Yeah.
We do not regulate whether it's rented or not. We do a restriction saying that cannot be sold separately from the house, and that one of the units must be owner-occupied. But we do not track whether it's rented, or a family member uses it, or no one uses it.
Yeah, and I would think anything like that would actually be fairly heavy-handed. I think we're mandating how people can build, but the use is up to them.
I guess, you know, I was just sort of thinking about David's comment that, okay, I build a home, I'm at FAR, I'm going to add 1,000 square foot for two extra bedrooms on the premise that it is an ADU.
I think state says 800 max, by the way.
For two-bedroom?
If you're exceeding, if you're exceeding the city requirements. I believe I was able to clarify earlier that if you're exceeding existing zoning requirements, it can only be by 800 square feet maximum.
That's our understanding.
Okay. So in any event, I think yes, and I'm just testing for, again, what is the spirit and what is the law or the obligation? If I get a building permit, does it have anything that goes with it that I say, this is an ADU, and I agree that it will be used by one? So maybe your answer is no.
There's a covenant recorded against the property saying it is an ADU, but not the portion about renting it.
Can I add one thing that, I think we, staff, we can investigate whether or not the city could prohibit a door between an attached ADU and the main house. It's not clear to me whether or not cities have. So if the city does have that authority, it might address some of the concerns.
It would. It would also be problem, I don't know. I can imagine scenarios where you legitimately want to have a passageway, like if you're renting it to family, family. But, so, these are not easy questions. I do like the fact that we're being mindful of the massing impact, but some of it just comes with the parcel of having the ADU rules brought to us by the state. But we don't necessarily just want to open the floodgates to change our zoning rules over, in effect, change our zoning rules overall by calling, by putting the words "ADU" in the application.
Yeah, I agree with that. Moving on to number three.
So number three is the recommendation to limit the height for ADUs located over garages. Currently, they're allowed to be 28 feet in height, and staff is recommending lowering that height to 20 feet.
And is that only over garages, or is that for any ADU on a second story, anywhere?
That is only over detached garages. We are recommending, as part of the change, oops, let me go back, to not allow two-story detached second units or accessory dwelling units unless it's over a garage. So you couldn't have, you know, a downstairs, upstairs, second unit detached at the rear of your property. You could only have a second unit above a garage, or, you know, as part of your main house. And in that case, it follows the main house regulations.
I see. Okay. And the, and what is the implication of a 20-foot limit? I mean, I know we have roof pitch requirements, but if it's 20 feet, I mean, so we can have flat roofs in these situations?
Yeah, I mean, it would definitely encourage that, so we kind of get into the discussion of, do we want the ADUs to match the house, right, where you have maybe the steep gables or things like that, versus the impacts to neighbors of having, you know, a second-story four feet away from the property line? So it's really a trade-off, and wanting to hear, you know, the commission's feedback on what they think about either option.
Let me ask, I don't think we heard much public comment on this point, but my perception is the concern is more about privacy than it is perhaps shading, but that might be a concern as well. But if the concern is principally privacy, instead of a max height, maybe it'd be a max height of the second floor, like the floor level, perhaps. I'm just, I am troubled that we would be restricting the architecture to, you know, flat roofs that might look out of place in our neighborhoods.
I definitely understand that concern, and I think something else we were looking at is, you know, with the new state laws, there's a lot of things we're not able to control anymore. And trying to take into account the work done last year with massing and concern with that. This was really what staff saw as one way to be able to have some effect on massing for that. But again, understanding that it might result in ADUs that aren't necessarily in character with the house or the community. So again, looking at the trade-off of that.
And is that, I guess, and not all of these are going to be in the backyard, right? There's plenty of detached garages towards the front of lots as well?
So there are detached garages in the front. They're mostly in hillside lots, because they're not allowed in the front, really on flat lots, at least new ones. Currently, if you have an ADU over the garage in the front, you still have to meet the front setback of 19 feet for a second story. And that becomes problematic, because garages in hillsides can be five feet from the front property line. So you have your garage five feet, but then, you know, we have the second floor 19 feet back, so that obviously takes a lot away. Again, the challenge of not having a two-story structure five feet from the front property line. So again, you know, the trade-offs of allowing that to be really close, or to meet the main house setbacks for the front. I should note that the state law does allow reduced setbacks on the detached, the ADUs over detached garages for the side and rear, but is silent on the front setback. So that's why the city's been applying the main house front setback for ADUs.
Okay. And that, we don't think that will be preempted?
Think so. It hasn't been mentioned in any of the laws, yeah.
So we won't likely see two-story ADUs on a five-foot front setback in a hillside district?
Not under our current code, no. And in the future, too, because there's nothing in the state law that prohibits us imposing the front setback. What we will see is the ADU is closer to the side and rear, so you could have one up towards the front, you know, four feet from the side property line, but per code, 19 feet back.
So, you know, I do think a height restriction makes a lot of sense, and to keep it pretty low, like 20 feet, in the case of a four-foot setback, because that can be a pretty intimidating structure, that close to a lot line. But perhaps we can open that back up to our normal 28 feet if you are further than that setback. And I don't know if 10 feet would be the right answer, or what the right answer might be. But it seems to me if you have a particularly large lot, or if the structure is more in the center of the lot, that allowing it to match the architecture is more of a concern than restricting it to 20 feet kind of arbitrarily in that case. I don't know if the other commissioners have a thought around that or not.
I was thinking about solar, and thinking that the 20 feet makes sense, and to be mindful of neighbors that may have already have solar panels on their roof and be worried about the additional height, and thinking less about the architectural significance and more about providing more hours of direct sun onto solar panels for people that already have them that might live next door. That would be important to me.
And the other benefit of the lower height, of a 20-foot height limit, is it would encourage building to the rear of the house, to choose not to go on top, to build a tower on top of your garage, but to put it in the rear of the house. So I would, I would be supportive of this. I'd have to think about, if it's further back, then it does seem less intrusive, so whether a provision should be made. That's a reasonable question.
I think we heard from a couple folks tonight, of two, two or three folks talked about the hillside overlay. And I think it would be helpful to get some recommendations, reflections from staff around, what flexibility do you think would be useful, reasonable? You know, again, the 19-foot front yard setback, or others in hillside overlay. And then I think it was raised about creek setback. Are there any other conditions that crop up that we should be reflective on, so that if we're making these changes, we sort of bundle them into one set of code changes, rather than have to come back if we miss it?
I think we should limit rental to longer-term rentals instead of shorter-term rentals. One thing, we heard from the audience, several people spoke to parking problems limitation. We know that'll be a tough problem to solve in many cases. I wonder, is there a way we could limit the number of people that would live there if they were rentals, or families for that matter? I mean, why do we need two-bedroom ADUs? And also, a couple people asked, can they build two or more ADUs on their single-family detached house?
Through the chairman, my understanding is with the new law that there's a possibility to construct both a JDU, which is 500 square feet or less, part of the main house, as well as an ADU, which could be attached or detached.
Now, there's somewhere along the line, I also read that bathtubs were prohibited. What's that about?
I haven't heard that, so.
I think that was just saying that if we're going to define bathroom, we could leave it a shower and not require a bathtub, I think, was that discussion.
Yeah, but especially if it's older people, bathtubs are necessary sometimes. So I don't think we should prohibit them, but...
Yeah, I think that was a minimum requirement, yeah. Yeah, I think that is something we should understand more, as if we want to be in the business of allowing JDUs and ADUs at the same, on the same property. And is that correct? We are not under a state mandate to allow for JDUs?
That's correct now. We do not have to allow them. I wasn't sure if in the new state law, we do have to, or it's only if we have a JDU ordinance that that applies.
I'm equally not clear. It's not, I think that the bill is not clear. If it's, if, like Andrea said, if you allow it, then you have to allow both, but whether or not you have to allow it, I'm not sure.
Okay.
Currently, we don't. There is a choice of whether to allow them or not, and the city does not allow them right now.
Okay. All right, moving on to four, or 3B.
So staying with the ADUs above detached garages, finding ways to limit, you know, encourage privacy, prohibiting balconies and second-story decks for ADUs that are on top of the garages, prohibiting roof decks above accessory structures, and requiring opaque or clear-story windows that face immediately the side and rear neighbors.
Is there a definition of immediately adjacent? How many inches of offset can there be?
There is not a definition. Under our current code, or our current second unit code, we had 10 feet as the limit, meaning you couldn't have any windows within that distance. So I mean, I think that's the distance that you could set, or, you know, encourage them to be a certain distance away. And if not, that they'd have to be either the opaque or the clear-story type of windows.
The building department, who sees these plans, would have judgment, I mean, they would...
They would look at it for fire safety, so egress and things like that. And we'd want to, of course, encourage the larger windows and egress, you know, facing inwards versus to the neighbor's property, especially if it's only four feet away.
Andrea, can you clarify that the recommendation, does it override the windows and doors for detached ADUs that are located 10 feet or less are prohibited? Or is this in addition?
So it's, the current regulation in our municipal code is currently invalid, so the state law is governing this. So we put the current regulation as what, I guess a better way to say it is what we've had before. The state law doesn't have anything related to this, so this is really open in terms of you could, you know, go back to what we had before, you could go with staff's recommendation or come up with another recommendation. So this one really is more open in terms of what you think is best.
Yeah, I'd be interested in my colleagues' views, and I'd just put mine out there, that I think if you're four foot off a property line, and, I mean, opaque window might be good. And by the way, if your neighbor's master bedroom's kind of looking out the back, and you got a little light on all night long, it's a little annoying. My point would be, my bias would be to not have windows, and certainly doors, on buildings' sides or rear within four foot of the property line, but...
I would just chime in and say, I think opaque windows are a nice solution. I mean, it's, I'm not even sure you want to look at kind of monolithic wall if you're that neighbor. I think the concern is one of privacy. So if it's opaque and they can't look out, and it's pretty obviously opaque, I think that's a nice solution to this. It allows them light in, but they can't look out. And I think having, you know, I mean, the state's saying, we have to allow these things four feet from the property line. These will be intimidating structures. I like that we'll probably cap them at 20 feet. But to not have windows on that 20-foot wall, I think, would maybe even be worse from the neighbor's perspective.
I like these rules, particularly for the garages where the impact could be greatest. But I wonder, can some of these restrictions be applied for ADUs located further back? Or not on top of garages, I should say? Second-story ADUs that are not on top of garages, I should say? Second-story ADUs that are not on garages? Maybe that would be, would it be feasible to expand these? It seems to me, whether it's on top, if you're a neighbor, a second-story ADU overlooking in the privacy issues would be the same, whether it's on top of a garage, or whether it's on top of an existing bedroom.
So through the chair, one thing we're proposing is to not allow second, two-story ADUs unless it's above a garage, and also not to allow the ADU footprint to go past the garage, other than the stairs needed to get upstairs. So ideally, there wouldn't be a way to have a second-story ADU unless it's part of the main house or above a garage.
Okay, that's a nice clarification to understand. So that reduces the potential massing impact and privacy issues quite a bit, then. So now I understand why this is detached garage-specific. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up with a question about stairs. So the law doesn't say anything about how the exterior access up to the second floor above the garage happens, but some cities, I think I saw Redwood City, or somebody specifically denotes how you can, where those stairs are placed. And how do the stairs relate to the setbacks? If you have a four-foot setback, and then you have a four-foot set of steps, does that mean that your wall is eight feet back? Or how does that work?
I think we would have some, we'd have some way to regulate it with health and safety. However, I do know that the law basically says if you're getting to the point where the ADU is not feasible, there are, you know, concessions you have to make. So if it were that case where the stairs are encroaching more than what's allowed by the zoning code, we would definitely bring in building at that point to talk about, you know, fire ratings and things like that, and probably have to look at it at a case-by-case basis, I would think.
And I suppose there may be, if I'm the neighbor and there's a detached garage with an ADU above it, I suppose I don't want the stairs right outside my bedroom window. I'd prefer to have the person build them in more interior to the property, so that you don't hear clump, clump, clump all night if people go into their homes' ADUs, you know, late at night.
So through the chair, if that's something the commission's interested in, we can definitely do that, it's, you know, encouraging it.
Yeah, I would like to understand the stair, stair issues better, because there's a privacy potential issue there as well. People might like to sit on the stairs, to use it in effect as a deck.
Yeah, I think that's fine. In fact, just speaking out loud, I would think it would be fine that the stairs would need to be enclosed, you know, as part of the house enclosed, if it's going to be on the second floor of the main dwelling. I don't see any purpose necessarily in open-air staircases going up to a second-floor ADU.
Yeah, so we should learn more about that.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to number four.
So this is the rental term. Currently, there are no restrictions on short-term rentals. Staff is recommending a minimum rental term of at least 30 days to increase the opportunity for more permanent housing options. And the state law does allow us to do this as a, the 30 days as a minimum requirement.
And this would, I'm just curious, how do we have any similar such ordinances where there's obviously, you know, there's no real obvious enforcement mechanism unless a neighbor starts complaining, and then, you know, do we have anything like this in the city now that we basically relied on, and I guess code enforcement to go around and make these checks? Like, how does that actually work?
I think generally speaking, things that aren't associated with an active permit or some sort of construction are mostly on a complaint basis. So we get a lot with trees, for example, neighbors' trees, garbage cans being left out, those kinds of things, that are called in and are regulated by our code. But we rely on people letting us know, either by calling or filling out a form, or through Inform San Carlos, you know, things that need to be repaired, things like that. But I would say, if it's associated with a permit, we're seeing it, but it's the things that aren't really associated with us going out there regularly.
Got it. But then, so with this in place, it would be our building department's code enforcement division who would follow up on these complaints?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is the, it's, like, what is the magnitude of fines? Is that to be determined? Like, depending on the code violation, we can select whatever fine we think, you know, as a city? We can select the fine range? Or is this, like, already kind of defined?
Normally, we would warn somebody if they're in violation of the city code, and we'd give them a chance to comply. So typically, you know, it's a letter, you have, you know, so much time to comply, and then we check back after that date, or we wait for compliance if it doesn't happen. And then, you know, there could be a fine or a citation, and if they don't comply, then it goes to the city attorney's office for legal action.
Okay. I'm just making the observation that there can be very strong incentives on short-term rentals. So if our fines are insignificant, people might just choose to pay them and continue to rent on a short-term basis.
Mr. Chairman, we haven't run into that yet, but that's certainly possible. I think if we did, we would certainly get the picture and have to make a change.
Yeah, understood.
I don't recall from the PAC, is there any information about neighboring cities and their regulations on 30 days, 90 days? Or is there experience in San Mateo County that you could share with us? What other communities have done in terms of rental duration?
I'm taking, sorry, I'm taking a quick look.
Looks like these cities, these have the same, San Mateo, Belmont, Foster City.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
So my sense is that a lot of cities' codes are a little ambiguous on the point. A number of city codes have prohibited, and a number of city, previously prohibited, and just generally, you can't do 30-day or less rentals. And then a few cities have gone out and said you can't rent ADUs. And the enforcement is a challenge. Some cities use a third-party vendor called Host Compliance, which will monitor listings and try and guess if one of them is illegal or an ADU. But it, and that helps, but it's still, I mean, it's much easier to see if, like, if someone's building a construction project, it's really easy to see it's happening. It's really hard for a city to see, is there, you go out and you look, it looks like a unit, you don't really know. If someone has taken a picture of the exterior and posted it on Airbnb, then the city can sometimes catch it, but otherwise, it can be a really hard, hard thing to comply, to force compliance with. There's a few cities, Portland allows short-term vacation rentals, and I think it's about a quarter of their ADU stock is for vacation rentals.
Just to mention, it is an option to allow short-term rentals, and I think we could impose hotel tax or something like that on them, just to make that observation. Not sure, would want to go down that path, but I think that is what some cities are doing to think about the tax revenue opportunity of short-term rentals, the same way we think about occupancy tax in hotels.
This one seems to me to be a reasonable, the 30 days seems like a reasonable.
Yeah.
Longer than that, it's even more difficult to enforce, and I think this would reduce the day-to-day comings and goings of people with suitcases that would, might be particularly annoying to a residential neighborhood. Although Airbnb rentals in non-ADUs are allowed in San Carlos, to my understanding, so it's not controversial in the city like it is in San Francisco.
And I suppose someone could just move into their ADU, and we don't have any restriction on short-term rental of the primary house, as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah, so actually, it could be kind of a bit of irony there, weirdness, that you could rent your house for short times, but not your ADU unit for short. But I think it seems consistent with the goal of having the ADU be for longer-term housing.
I guess I would ask, why not 60 days? I mean, we're trying to encourage more housing in the town, so 30 days is pretty short-term, actually.
Yeah.
I think provision for maybe like someone staying over a summer, or some temporary situation, I don't feel strongly. I think 30 days is fine, anything longer than short-term.
Does the state mandate speak to this?
The state requires a 30-day minimum, the new state law.
But cities could impose longer if they want?
So, yeah, from what I read. Josh, would you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
I would have thought they would have. I mean, the city could, who is opposed to having ADUs, which I understand there are some cities that are reluctant, might say, fine, but it's a one-year minimum rental or something as a way to discourage them. So it'd be, I don't know, it'd be nice to confirm what the state mandate is on this.
I also like the idea of 30 days at a minimum. And I note from, I think in the PAC, at San Mateo, Belmont, and Foster City also have the same thing. They have 30 days. So I, and I think it also sends a message of intent, that we're starting to think about longer-term rentals, and I hear your point that the main house could be a short-term rental. That's true, but by getting this on the books for ADUs, we're starting to plant a seed, I think, of our intent with short-term rentals.
Okay, we better keep moving. Number five.
So number five's the possibility of providing an incentive for affordable units. So one suggestion would be to offer a 10% increase in floor area if the ADU is used for affordable housing at the low-income levels. So the question is, should there be an incentive to actually deed-restrict an ADU to be at an affordability level? Or, you know, other ideas or options, if you do think that's something worthwhile to do.
My thoughts on this are, I'm all for encouraging more affordable housing. I just don't think this is realistic, that anyone's going to put a deed on their house that could affect their aftermarket sale in this manner, because we're talking about a full deed restriction and a 10% increase. I guess I'll put it this way, I don't think we could provide a large enough increase that we would be comfortable allowing, that would actually incentivize a full deed. That's my observation on this.
I would, I would agree with that, and I don't know that if you're using an ADU for affordable housing, whether a larger, a 10%, larger is really that, would be that desirable. I mean, you'd be motivated, whether an owner would be motivated to get that extra 10%. I can't think of scenarios where this would be particularly useful, and it does, and there are complications, like you just outlined.
And maybe 50% would encourage them, but I don't think we would want 50% larger ADUs.
I mean, if somebody was trying to circumvent the current zoning, you know, might be interested in getting an extra 10%, but that's not what we're aiming for. So I would be less enthusiastic about this.
Did staff consider any other ways to incentivize affordable housing as part of this?
No, this was the only sort of idea we came up with, but again, as you said, I mean, any ways to do that would involve a deed restriction. So really trying to come up with something that's attractive enough to have someone do that. This was, this was kind of the one thing, because people seem to care most about floor area. But again, if there's any other options you might have, or if you think it's just not something that's, that's realistic, either way, we'd want to know.
You know, I think, and it's probably well beyond our purview, but one thinks of property tax incentives, and maybe that's a county-wide issue that, that might encourage people. So that economic incentive may be more direct, rather than a, us build a bigger footprint.
Yeah, I agree with that, something more direct, but yeah, I'm not sure if that's something we'd be able to enact, you know. Barring something creative like that, I think I would suggest removing this, just as a layer of code and complexity, if we don't think it's realistic. Just my general view on government is, if something doesn't make sense, we shouldn't codify it into the regulations, and I'm not sure this makes sense.
I agree.
I would agree with that, too. I think it's problematic, and I'm just trying to think about another way we could offer an incentive. I'll have to give that some thought.
Sure approach.
So in looking at all the slides and hearing all the comments about parking, what comes to my mind is, one of the solutions that came was available when we were looking at it, is we have a two-car garage. The simplest, most cost-effective solution is to convert it into an AUD, because we don't have to deal with all of these rules about the second story. We have no privacy concerns. We have an apartment complex on one side, and San Carlos Avenue on the other, and our other neighbor's set way back. So the simplest solution for us would be to convert our garage into an AUD, call it a day, cost-effective. And so to encourage us to keep our parking, which we would love to keep, relaxing some of the requirements above, when the director finds that there are no privacy concerns, there's no shading concerns, would be really helpful, because otherwise, we'll convert it and you'll lose your parking.
Sure, yeah, just approach.
I just wanted to go back to the Portland example, that when they waived their, and I actually know what these are, SDC waivers for ADUs. When they did that, they saw a huge increase in the number of ADUs. So it was simply a fee waiver with a covenant. I don't understand the work you guys do, so I can send you a link. But anyway, they went from having, in the previous year, they said they had in 2016, in 2009, the year before the waivers, the first set of waivers went through, 24 permits were issued. In 2016, they saw 615 ADU permits. That's a bigger city, but anyway, they just had a huge, it kind of opened the floodgates. I don't know what the financial ramifications for that would be, but it was a big incentive to get more units, so.
Okay.
And we don't have a parking problem on my street, just for the record.
So I do think fee incentives are interesting, but I think that's been streamlined already now under state law. Is that right? Or how bad are the fees to apply for an ADU?
So a lot of the, like sewer connection fees and things like that have been waived. Under the new law, you don't need to sprinkle an ADU if it's not required for the main house. So there's things like that. As far as I know, building, we don't take in planning fees for ADUs, so it's really just the building permit fees, which is based on square footage or valuation. But I think more of the, you know, significant fees have been waived, for the most part, by state law.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think we're kind of clear here. If staff could come up with something that would make this more interesting, whether it's additional waiver of cost or something, we'd look at it. But if it's just, if that's the best we can do is a 10% increase, probably best just to leave that out at this point.
So the last area is the rear yard area for detached ADUs. So currently, our accessory structure ordinance says that ADUs cannot occupy more than 30% of the required rear yard, which is generally speaking, the rear 15 feet. What this ends up doing is basically, the larger percentage of the footprint is outside of that 15-foot setback. So basically forces detached structures closer to the main residence. Staff is proposing to increase that 30% up to 50, to allow ADUs, single-story ADUs, to be closer to the rear yard, and, you know, get more of that footprint within the rear yard, and hopefully discourage ADUs from going above garages and that second story, you know, the second story impacts from that.
How will, or how does the four-foot state law setback intersect with this?
That's a good question. Am I, would it supersede this? If it... That's a good question. Am I, would it supersede this? If it?
It would. The four-foot setback, so they would be allowed to use those four-foot setbacks. And I think the question is, the state law is a little like, it's kind of that 800-square-foot rule. It's like, if you can't do it anywhere else, then you're allowed to cover more of the backyard or have more FAR. So it might end up being on a case-by-case basis. I think we'd have to think a little more how it interacted.
And my understanding, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, is if there is the possibility to comply with it, they do have to do that.
That's how I read it, too.
So, so if they can comply, they wouldn't be able to say, oh, we invoke this. It's if they really can't comply to our rules, then they could use, use the state requirements.
So I guess I was a little confused here. What, you know, I understand our lot coverage ratio, but what is a required rear yard area? I guess I'm not even familiar with that.
So basically, if we, just to kind of make the math easy on me, if we had a 50 by, 50-foot wide by 100-foot lot, the rear yard, required rear yard is 15 feet deep. So we take that 15 and multiply it by the width, 50 feet. So it creates this rectangular area in the rear, which ends up being 750 square feet. So basically, 30% of that area can be covered by the footprint of an accessory structure. The other 70% has to be open area. And so we're basically now saying you can increase that to 50% of the area. So 300, 275 square feet, 375 square feet.
So that's not in our, so that must, because, you know, we spent a lot of time in that part of the code. So this is a different part of our code about accessory units?
It is. It's in the accessory unit section. And what we saw happening is, this, this applies to all detached accessory structures. We saw the detached garages, especially those at the rear corner, taking up all of the allowable area. So basically, ADUs then come in and we say, oh, you can't build it here. You've maxed it out with your garage.
Got it.
So it's really just to kind of allow a little bit more flexibility to keep those at single-story.
Got it. But now if they connected that to the main house, this wouldn't apply at all. Is that correct?
If they connected it to the main house, it would not apply at all. Correct. They'd have the setbacks for the house.
And does a connection by breezeway count? Or does it have to share a wall, or it's considered an accessory unit?
Currently, in our code, we don't have the requirement that it be, that an ADU be connected by a breezeway. What we've done, just in general, for accessory structures, is if it's structurally a part of the main house, whether it's roof or wall, we've said it's attached. If it, if it's not attached structurally, it has to be at least six feet away from the house. So there's kind of no in-between between either being attached structurally and six feet away.
I see.
About a 12-foot breezeway would connect.
Under our current code, if there were 12-foot breezeway, we would consider that main house. So everything would meet the, the main house setbacks.
Is, that's right. So a breezeway of any size would connect an accessory unit to the house and make it all the main premise?
The way our code reads now is, in order to be an accessory structure, not just an ADU, but anything, it has to be at least six feet away from the eve of the house. The eve of the structure are six feet away from the eve of the house.
And so a breezeway connects the eaves, so there, there's no separation?
Right.
Could, maybe at the next meeting, could, could we get an example or two of how this actually shows up in a footprint? Again, for me, this is, it seems like a very good recommendation, and I just can't picture what the downside would be on a couple of different lot footprints. For example, if this results in a whole bunch of 220-square-foot ADUs, which, I don't know if that's actually practical, does it end up incentivizing the wrong thing?
Okay. Thank you, Andrea, for going back through that. Then, maybe most useful now, you know, I've been kind of keeping a list of things that I feel more or less strongly about. And maybe we've all been keeping a list similar to that. So maybe we should just briefly discuss those and see if, if we have consensus that, hey, staff should really think about doing that. So for me, top of my list is, I do feel like kitchen and bathroom needs to be thoroughly defined here. If you're going to be an ADU, it needs to be a functional kitchen. And what it can't be, in my mind, if you were going to game kitchen, I think it would end up being a bar, right? Because a bar is pretty close to a kitchen, but that's not something someone's going to cook at. So I'm thinking, I don't know, size of refrigerator, but like higher than counter height, that can't be a wine cooler. And at least, you know, a two-burner minimum cooking surface would, like, we don't have to define this here, but like, that's how I'm thinking about it. So I'd appreciate if we all agree, more staff consideration of that. And with regard to bathroom, I think the classic definition of a three-quarter bath minimum. So you can have a bigger bath or two baths, but at least a shower as, as a minimum part of the requirement of a bathroom. Does, does anyone think of those a different way?
I think it would be nice to understand those options.
Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
Bring forward the, the design review process options that we have as a city. I think we want to avoid a situation where somebody goes just through the building department and so without notice to the neighbors and, and puts up a big structure. And if there's no threat of design review, there's less incentive for the architect to, to be considerate of the, of the impact in a small number of cases. But we need to, to make provision for those. So what options do we have to impose to have design review as part of the process? I understand there's a 60-day clock that we have to deal with, so there are constraints. But what can we do to ensure neighborhood compatibility and privacy issues can be addressed?
I'd like the staff to consider bringing the applications forward to the residential design review committee after the staff review. Had you thought about that? Basically what you said, yeah.
That'd be one option. I mean, I would think there'd be a variety of options that we potentially could consider.
We could look through the different options and bring back the possibilities.
I think kind of the, the elephant in the room perhaps would be, you know, I heard ambiguity around whether the 800 square feet will be a complete exception to our floor area ratio and lot coverage. And it's a tough one, because I, I agree that we should really understand, if we're looking at one of our smaller lots, smaller houses, what would adding 800 feet to that maximum building envelope look like? Now, if we are preempted by state, I guess that doesn't matter. We're preempted by the state. But I guess, to the extent there's ambiguity, I would almost suggest we just say it is an exception, because I just, I don't see how we can leave this process with that fundamental piece ambiguous. So I, I guess, I guess mostly I would suggest staff really spends a bit of time figuring out, is that ambiguous? Is it not ambiguous? Is the state going to clarify that? And if not, how long until we feel like that that is clarified? Because it doesn't feel like we really should do anything here until we know the outcome of that question.
I don't have anything to add from beyond the comments earlier.
I don't have anything to add beyond the comments earlier, either.
I had one more concern, which was this gap between the state law going into effect and our city law being open. And the state law is quite a bit more permissive than what we're talking about here. So there would be that three-month window when you could submit an application and be grandfathered in, I suppose. Is there anything we can do about that?
I don't think so. I mean, just, just taking into account the time that it'll take to get an ordinance recommended to council. And then, you know, they do the first reading, and then the second reading, and then the 30 days. We have, you know, the furlough at the end of the year and kind of having to schedule with, with the council. I, I don't think that will be feasible. I mean, we can definitely try to bring it forward as quick as possible to try to shorten that time. And I'm guessing we'll probably know more at the next meeting when we see how long it takes to figure out the interpretation on certain things, how quickly we can get that. So we can definitely try, but I don't know that it would be done by, by January 1st.
I mean, to pressure test that, I understand that for the full permanent laws, there's lots of work to make that. But perhaps a interim lighter weight rule or something would, maybe there's something that could be done there. Just, it just, I don't want to create a situation of unfairness where, where some people, by putting an application in, can do a lot more than what the neighbor could do a few weeks later.
And what the council's done before with, with certain ordinances is also, you know, put in, you know, applications taken in by this date will go under, you know, the old rules or the new rules. So if we could, you know, have you recommend something like that if you were, were concerned about that. But I don't know if your concern's more the people applying later or the people applying earlier, like stopping the earlier applicants.
Taking advantage of the more permissive.
Yeah, so it's kind of reverse of what?
To do something that wouldn't be allowed afterwards.
And, and to build on that, it's my understanding, once the city council adopts an amended ordinance, it gets submitted to the state for review and approval. What, I'm guessing they're not going to do this in a day and a half, that they're going to take a little bit of time to thoughtfully review it. And, and to build on that comment, what happens during that time period? I, you know, I'm not sure. Maybe something similar to what you're outlining could happen, yeah.
Remember reading about review. I don't know about the approval part of that. I mean.
So my understanding, and Josh, he'll can correct me if I'm wrong, the state basically is just looking to see if it complies with state law. My understanding is it's still valid once it's approved. It's not like the housing element that has to be approved by the, by the state. However, if they think something is not in compliance with state law, they'll send us a letter saying, you know, we think you need to fix XYZ. And then we choose whether to do that or not. So it, it would be in effect from the 30 days, yeah.
One other item I would appreciate my colleagues' thoughts on is, so lots of parking concerns. I think that's valid. I think as people design these, and especially as they're able to go larger on these lots, I think lot coverage will be a significant limiting factor. So I, just as a thought, perhaps excluding, in the case of an ADU, excluding additional off-street parking from lot coverage is something, I don't know if staff consider that, or if anyone else would agree with exploring that further. But I would hate to think someone would love to expand their driveway, but then choose not to, because they're up against their lot coverage ratio, which is what I think would stop someone from expanding their driveway.
Through the chair, depending on the height of the driveway, we wouldn't necessarily count it towards lot coverage. However, we have paving requirements, maximum paving allowance, you know, allowances. And in the Hillside Overly District, we have natural state requirements. So those are two things that, you know, would be directly affected by the paving.
That's what I was, so driveways aren't part of lot coverage, but they're part of, there's like another 50% about runoff or something.
Yeah, well, a couple of things. They get calculated into stormwater runoff calculations. They're limited in width by the zoning code. The amount of paving for driveways and walkways, for example, is limited for all single-family homes. And then on top of that, in hillside districts, you're limited to how much you actually disturb. So any driveway, or, you know, again, walkway, anything, all counts against you for that. So it definitely becomes a limiting factor.
Okay.
Yeah.
Pan, can you see any major concern with exempting one additional space per ADU from those various requirements?
I think if it was, you could do things like have it be pervious surface as opposed to impervious surface, because there are runoff issues and other things that, and drainage and, and so we need to be cognizant of those things. If you do it all over the city, then you have a real problem with, with runoff and, and other issues. So that's the intent, is to have more natural state, you know, and less impervious surface with runoff and things like that. But you could allow, again, some other kinds of materials that would allow the water to go through.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, unless someone has a different thought, I would encourage staff just to think through maybe allowing an exception from those various requirements for up to one additional parking space off-street per ADU, assuming, I guess, it's water pervious. And I think, so right now, JDUs are not allowed, and there's no thought to allow them. We're basically going to restrict all our thinking here to ADUs?
I think one thing that we need to figure out is whether, you know, us, I mean, on one hand, it's great to allow them, because it, you know, provides more housing. But does us allowing them then trigger this requirement of, you know, having to allow an ADU and a JDU? So I think that's something we can look into and get that answer to you, so we can at least have all the information before deciding either way.
That's fine. And I think that my concern there would be, I wouldn't want to be in a position of having ADUs and JDUs in the same location. I mean, that's probably an owner just trying to be right on the maximum envelope, using everything they can do. I think our incentive here is to have a distributed additional supply of ADUs through the city, not maxing out individual lots. So by all means, study it more. But I would want to restrict the opportunity to have a JDU and an ADU on the same lot. So if the best way to do that is to not have JDUs, I think, you know, we, I don't think you're proposing a minimum, a minimum size to ADUs. So given that, I don't really see a big purpose for JDUs. And then finally, I would just suggest, not mandate it, but I do think we should check in with the Transportation and Circulation Committee. I think there could be significant parking issues. If a developer was proposing potentially hundreds of new units somewhere, we would certainly require an impact statement around parking and such. So I think we should at least put some time and effort into thinking through that.
I agree.
I would concur.
All right. Is there anything else we want to talk about on ADUs?
Command the staff for doing a really good job on the outreach to let the, let the city know that this was happening and that there could be impact, fairly substantial impacts, I hope mostly good, some problematic from this. And so it was really wise to, to bring this out in a, in a very public way. And really appreciate the comments from, from everybody. It's very, we really do guide our, our recommendations on the feedback we receive. So appreciate getting that.
I also really liked the presentation. It was really helpful for me to see how you laid out all the slides. It was, it was really, that was very helpful for me to see each one in its own slide. And it also guided the discussion, which for me was very helpful. Thank you.
Terrific. Yeah, we'll move out of our study session now and move into reports, correspondence, and general information. Any report on recent city council actions?
Nothing to report.
Okay. For planning commission comments or reports, I would just put a plug in as, and I'm not sure if we meet again. Do we meet again? Do you happen to know, before our, what do we call, mini-retreat, I guess we're calling it?
Yes, on the 21st. There will be.
There will be a meeting.
Okay. So I will say this again, on the 21st, but I would put a plug in for all of us that plan to be at that mini-retreat to watch Mayor Olbert's State of the City address that he gave in January. It was, it's available on YouTube if you just Google "State of the City of San Carlos address." And I just flag it because I thought it was a very useful and insightful overview of land use issues, specifically as they relate to San Carlos. And I think that would be a good framing to some of what we plan to talk about at that mini-retreat.
I have two things. One is the Director of Community Development, Alice Ave. Will be talking to my class at Berkeley this Saturday morning, as he's done in the past before, and I appreciate that. Second thing is Josh Abrams here. We've got, it was handed out, I think, one of our last meetings, the 30th of this month, October, day before Halloween. They're going to put on a good program about transportation and all things concerned. So look forward to that. San Mateo City Library.
Terrific. That is good training, and I am planning to be there.
See ya.
Question for staff. At the mini-retreat, is there, is parking going to be on the agenda for like a strategy or visioning discussion?
The intent of the discussion is really what the planning commission wants to talk about. So really, it's if you want to talk about parking and issues around parking, that's your prerogative.
Well, I'd put a plug in for that. I think, you know, we've been to quite a number of, or during our different study sessions, we've heard a lot about parking, and tonight is no different. And it is clearly a point of tension for people when they're on the narrow streets, up in the hillside, and certainly down here in the flats. And it'd be great to take that up as an agenda because I think the residents, our fellow citizens, would appreciate knowing what else we could do about it. So for my part, I'd like to have some conversation.
Terrific. Any other planning commission comments or reports? Any correspondence or additional comments, staff?
Correspondence, nothing other than the email that was left at the DICE in terms of additional comments. As I mentioned, there is going to be a planning commission meeting on the 21st of October. It'll be a pretty full agenda. We have a mixed-use project at 1240 El Camino, a pre-zoning annexation application up on Club, the Calwater tank that was here a while ago is coming back, and then a rezoning for mapping air for 125 Wingate. And then on the 23rd, so that Wednesday at 6:00 PM, is the PC mini-retreat.
Got it. Very good. Thank you. Terrific. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.